Time being seven o'clock. The Kingsburg Borough Council meeting, committee session, will come to order. We'll start with the budget.
Vice President Anthony. Councilman Rupert. Councilman Merritt. Councilwoman Martin. Here. Councilman O'Neill. Mayor Ritter. Lieutenant Honig. Superintendent Kiwi. Engineer Ogolkey. Engineer Middenski. Chief Meyer. Matt. Managers Assosky. We have four.
Thank you. I think we're going to switch things up a little bit during the call of the chair and the suggestion of the solicitor. We're going to go with approval of the agenda first, followed by the citizen's comment. Do we have any additions or items for the consent agenda? Are there any amendments or changes to the proposed amendments? Seeing none, do you have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Mr. Anthony moves. Is that second?
I'll second.
Mr. Martin, second to certain discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to citizen's comments.
My name is Shane Greig. I'm the director of the director of Renaissance Mechanicsburg. I'm here to say we just say thank you. Thank you to members of the Borough Council, Roger, Inspector Walthall, Mayor Ritter, everybody who's had a part in making sure that this Renaissance gets off the ground. Not only gets off the ground, but it gets off the ground in fine fashion despite the weather. We had a crowd of about 300 people attend the party we put on on Saturday with the demolition of One West Main Street. Please hold your applause. But as far as I can tell, everybody was pretty doggone happy about that. And the enthusiasm, the support of everybody in Mechanicsburg, but especially the Borough Council has been heartwarming and taken with much gratitude and respect. We will continue to build with you as we continue to build literally a new Mechanicsburg we intend to preserve and vitalize, not just on West Main and the area in front of PNC Bank, but along Main Street and Railroad Avenue. We will have ongoing discussions about those long streets we've got facing on which is Main Street, Main and Market. One of the other things I wanted to mention to you too is something that I have not yet mentioned to our board, but we needed to talk to you first before I did mention it. And that is about how we're going to use the space at One West Main Street before that park gets built. And just so you know, on Saturday, we will be raining sod down at One West Main. We've made arrangements to have the sod watered until it is rooted and well underway. It will be protected from the pitter-patter of little feet of big feet until we have that grass deal of saddleists. And then we are beginning to book events for the green. So it'll be events on the green for probably late spring into summer and fall. And with the idea that with the good tailwind will begin to build the park about a year from now, but don't count me on this. Don't, don't, don't count me out on this. But anyway, so what we were thinking about doing is actually I knew the Tom Anthony post, and I think it's a good one, and it's one that will help draw people into square, and that is let them sell now benches, nice iron benches, to those who have the inclination to honor somebody or to advertise somebody. We've already got three people who have made a commitment to doing this, tentatively agreed to do this, waiting for the approval of our, of our Renaissance Board. And so we will use that space with those benches appropriately placed until the new space is built. Once that space is built, we may not have exact use for those benches at that time, but we don't want to lose what those benches represent to Mechanicsburg. So we were thinking about the possibility of moving them out to Soldiers and Savers Park. I see Roger not even said, I just wanted to run this by you before I really brought it up to the board. I want to be able to say to them if it was something worth exploring with the Borough Council and before, before we really nailed it down. So I know you're not here to, I mean, I'm not here to expect any comments at this point, but I do think about it. And if you have any ideas or concerns or issues you'd like to raise with me about, I'm looking forward, we've already got, we've already got some events scheduled for the green coming up in the summer. So we know this is going to be, there's going to be a lot of activity here that will draw people into our downtown community. So that's all I have to say at this point. So give us some thought and discuss it. If you have any questions, comments, complaints, go to the mayor of some place, otherwise come to me.
Any other citizens' comments? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion for approval of the item from the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Booker makes some motions. Is there a second?
Check it.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Move on to the regular agenda. Action to authorize RFP for full feasibility study. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Martin makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Group of seconds, discussion.
From what I understand, in order to get all our grants to even make the pool a long-term amenity for the municipalities, we have, we have to do this. So I feel like this is a, I mean, we gotta spend a little money to make a little money, as fast as I can.
Have the solicitor had the chance to review?
I have not heard back from him on that. He does have copies of it, and I think Engineer Ogolkey has a copy of it too. It's modeled after Hampton Township's, one that they did for the CBD or the DCD grant money, and it's very stringent requirements on the feasibility study, so.
My only suggestion would be if the person, if the person who made the motion in the second, if they would amend the motion in seconds to say condition upon approval and review of the solicitor, and I'm not sure does the engineer have to review it as well?
I sent it to Greg just as a cursory thing to whoever makes sure that I had stuff in there for the grant, because they're more familiar with the, I mean, like I said, it's modeled after Hampton Township. It's not an exact copy of Hampton Township, but that is the one that they use to secure their, their grant from the, from the state.
I scanned it, you know, I did not do it in depth, so I can certainly take a closer look at that.
My only suggestion would be to amend the motion to include those two things, and then once that's done, we can report to offer as an advertiser without having to take action.
I can just plug dates in. I'll, I'll have dates in. You see that those, the dates were blanked in there based on approval from council.
Okay, so my motion would be then to authorize the RFP.
Condition upon.
Condition upon the approval of the solicitor and Engineer Ogolkey. Yes.
I, I second.
Any more discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Actions forward to county for review and advertise ordinance, number 176, remaining chapter 27, part 7, section 27 dash 750, conditions placed on conditional use of statute 2, based on the review and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Booker. Mr. Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Booker, second. Any more discussion? I think we should take a look at taking action, I guess in May. That's right. So we won't see it on the next agenda, but we'll see it on the May agenda.
Correct. It has to be advertised 20 days before you take action, I believe.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution number 82022 approving the deed of dedication of stormwater facilities conveying the borough stormwater system to the municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg. Is there a motion?
Who'll make the motion?
Ms. Martin makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anthony, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution number 82022 approving the deed of dedication of stormwater facilities conveying the borough stormwater system to the municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg. Is there a motion?
Who'll make the motion?
Ms. Martin makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Anthony, second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of termination agreement by and between the borough Mechanicsburg and municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg terminating the facilities exchange agreement dated September 1st, 2019, attachment 5. Is there a motion?
Certainly.
Mr. Booker makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anthony, second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Actions forward to county for review and advertise ordinance, number 176, remaining chapter 27, part 7, section 27 dash 750, conditions placed on conditional use of statute 2, based on the review and recommendations of the planning commission. Mr. Booker. Mr. Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Booker, second. Any more discussion? I think we should take a look at taking action, I guess in May. That's right. So we won't see it on the next agenda, but we'll see it on the May agenda.
Correct. It has to be advertised 20 days before you take action, I believe.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution number 82022 approving the deed of dedication of stormwater facilities conveying the borough stormwater system to the municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg. Is there a motion?
Who'll make the motion?
Ms. Martin makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Booker, second. Any more discussion? I think we should take a look at taking action, I guess in May. That's right. So we won't see it on the next agenda, but we'll see it on the May agenda.
Correct. It has to be advertised 20 days before you take action, I believe.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of termination agreement by and between the borough Mechanicsburg and municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg terminating the administrative and operational services agreement dated September 1st, 2020, attachment 6. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Booker makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. O'Neill, second. Any discussion?
There is, Solicitor Cassidy this evening sent a correction to this, this document. The fourth, whereas, he changed, the original one referenced a administrative and operation agreement. It should state the borough will lease the stormwater system from the authority and operate the stormwater system pursuant to the terms set forth in said lease agreement. So he took out operations and administrative and put in the leasing agreement. That's the only change to that, that document.
I'll amend them a line, but are you saying?
Everything else is the same except for that last line and that.
I'll amend that as soon to.
They changed it in that language.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of resolution number 82022 approving the deed of dedication of stormwater systems from the municipal authority of the borough Mechanicsburg, attachment number 7. Do you have a motion?
Salute.
Mr. Anthony moves. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Martin, second. Any discussion?
So this is a new process for council, relatively new process for council, and I'm curious, to what extent does, do the fellow council persons feel we need to vet a candidate? I found myself looking at this thinking, I don't know anything about this gentleman, I'm sure he's a fine gentleman, but I wouldn't be able to make a higher decision based on the information that was provided in my own business. So I just didn't know, are we doing this basically on the word of the information provided to us, or are we evaluating more than that?
So my question would be, so we do this at the, when I was on school, where we did this, right? They would bring us teachers, and we would receive resume, background, pretty much what we got from Roger, I'm sorry, Manager Sazursky. So my question would be, what else would you need in order to make, I know, I know you hire, you hire folks all the time, so what else would you need to fill in?
I, I suppose, I mean, I understood, was there a resume, is that that? It was an application, which showed all that information.
Yeah, that, that I saw. I'm not sure I need any additional, I just wondered what the process was. We totally hadn't discussed the process.
That would be my, yeah, question as well. What, what's the process that we can understand as in that, what we're making certain decisions? It'd just be important to know that. For example, are the references called, that part of the process? I don't know which specifically, but in general? Yeah, usually they are. I mean, in this case, getting him in here with the skills that he had, and sitting down with Curtis, myself, and CH, Monday morning, that was, it was determined, yes, we want this guy. He was willing to go to work, he was willing to go to work today.
Sure, no, I understood from, so.
This is, perhaps, but just in general, how does that work? In this case, what we've done is because the, we're, he's got 90-day probation to pass his, his, sort of, his, yeah, background checks, which is what we usually do. I mean, those are done. This gentleman has CDL, so we're not worried about him getting that. So we'll do the background checks, his driver's license is valid, it checks out, so one of the guys, I mean, he's had a reference on there of somebody that, you know, that we know, he works here. So, you know, and the other, the reference he had on there, Bruce Gilmore, has done work for the borough in the past, and done good work. I mean, so, I mean, it's a matter of simply calling them, but we have 90 days, and it's probationary officer for 90 days.
You're saying that within the 90 days, you typically do the phone calls to the reference?
Yeah, I know, whatever.
Other places?
Yeah. I mean, if they even, in the past, they have not even included, you can tell who was doing it from, from benefits, and that was it, because they weren't including references, they weren't including, they had different things on there, so it was basically, we submitted an application. This guy submitted an application, follows through, 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 so, yep.
I, I think when Roger brings the name to us to be hired, like, he's done his due diligence, I mean, I'm not gonna figure his, like, if they're gonna find two, come and, and look at this guy's resume to the extent that Roger would, and I mean, I feel like when emergency laws, it's like, we're gonna look at their information and fair enough, but I think like calling references and stuff, like, I'm not gonna figure and call references for, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Well, I'm not even, I'm not actually the general process for this. I'm not interviewing myself either. It's Curtis and CH are sitting in there, if it's gonna be somebody for the office, you know, we're gonna have, I'm gonna have probably either Barb, Sarah, or Danielle sitting in there with me, you know, to make sure that these people are gonna fit. Because, you know, they may see something, I'm looking at what their skills, what they're bringing to the table, you know, Curtis and CH are looking, how are you gonna fit with the current crew, along with what they're bringing to the table, the same way with, in the office working. So there's a lot more that goes into it than just, you know, taking a resume and throwing it out there, interviewing it, and then putting it on the agenda. And I think we're using the example of this first term, the council, it's just asking us kind of questions, and whether this looks into the table base for me, but that's done with all of this, so. A new part of this whole thing is it's come, it's come to council for a final approval. That's the only, I mean, this was done with everyone that was hired before.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that Roger would bring somebody to, like, he doesn't wanna hire them. Or doesn't think it's for a brand.
See, who brings their, the gentleman, who brings them back if I can't?
How did this particular candidate come to know about the job?
He saw it online.
Where did he advertise it?
Facebook, Indeed, not Indeed, LinkedIn, or, yeah, LinkedIn. There was a few other places they put it out there, we had it advertised one time in the Sentinel, so.
And you said that he had a connection to someone else who's already?
That's why he's going to the sewer plant and not to the Hydras.
Can you explain that? I'm sorry.
He's not going to be working with the gentleman that he's familiar with, he's going to work under somebody else.
I see.
It's my understanding we are also continually.
I need three more people, I had, as I said in the email, I had one volunteer quit, I had one retire, and by the end of next year, I will have two more retirees, potentially three more retirees at the sewer plant. So we are in need of employees, yes. And that's why there's an agenda, a discussion later on.
I think what we can do is, we'll work with council to formalize this process a little better and make it clear as to what steps were taken before the process and what, what steps are taken afterward. I know that the, the motion is contingent on satisfaction of all the pre-appointment requirements, and we can, we can educate council as to what those requirements are per, per different position.
This offer hasn't been made. This, I, I wanted council's approval before I made an offer to this guy. And I can do those before, I can make the, you know, once I get the approval from council to make the offer, I can do the background checks. And if it doesn't check out, then we move on to the next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel satisfied, is there any more discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to finding administration ordinance, Vice President Anthony.
Review board, have you, present your review board as their report. Discussion, discussion of the treasurer's report. If he has any conversation around that, except I will say that we have asked for prior month to be on the report along with current month, so that we can make a comparison. Any other comments from the committee? Thank you. I'll update, I'll update on the 2021 borough audit report, and we have a draft copy in our packet of the audit for our eyes only, if I understand.
It's, it's a draft, yes. That has been, that has been uploaded to the website. It's been accepted and approved at the state level, so it's just a matter of you guys reviewing it, any comments, and then passing it at the next council.
Sure, whether, cover letter coming on that, or not?
There may be a cover one, I think there is one coming from that, yes.
Executive summary.
Yep.
That's the committee, take a look at that, maybe let's talk again in two weeks.
That's good. I did tell Managers Assosky that we would have a formal review process that we would, we would go through the audit, and at the end of that review process, council would have the opportunity to accept the audit. I think that would be.
Accept the audit, yes.
Accept the audit. Is this in a different format from what I was used to seeing? I mean, I didn't, I didn't like this format.
It was easy to read, but.
Right, handle the one.
Yeah, it was, it was different from what I've seen previously. Yeah, I was also, before we accept the audit, I'm also looking for the, the management, the executive letter and management letter, but other than that, I think we will, the committee will get together and figure out a time, you know, the appropriate time to discuss this, so, thank you. Anything else?
Discussion changes, a minimum fine of $250 for the violent for violation of the dog ordinance. I think this was brought by councilman. You're right. Thanks.
So, it came to my attention from a concerned party that the fine of $250, where the minimum fine was allowed, I believe that the chief of justice in brief previous meeting, indicating that officers issue a warning first, for a first violation, if you will, and then possibly a fine in a second, if they feel the situation warrants it. But when you get to the district justice office, it's minimum $250 if found guilty, and then there are $0.30 worth of court fees stacked on top of that. And the thought was that perhaps that might be a little steep in some circumstances, and doesn't give a lot of flexibility to the judiciary to make, I mean, a case-by-case decision about how severe a fine might be. So there was a thought to change this to a lower minimum fine, and if, if council wanted to, to put a cap on it as well. There's a section 2 dash 407 under violations and penalties. So I guess I'm just looking for some conversation to see if anybody feels. I, I only don't, so I understand the responsibility of having a dog and owning it and feeding it and paying for all the dental and everything, I think $250, like, especially with chief saying that you gotta, you get an opportunity to correct it and make, you have an opportunity to correct it before you're fined, I feel like that's, you get your warning, you get your opportunity to correct it, and you, you don't do it again, you know, I, I know.
No, I think I, I agree with, with Councilman. I don't know, just was there a particular reason why you thought $250 might be too high?
I think that the thought was that in some cases, for instance, having small children at home, you know, and somebody who has the house, child opens the door, the dog runs out, that could happen more than once. Dogs at times can become very industrious in getting out of enclosures, not because of bad owner necessarily. I mean, I know in my past, we had a dog that literally climbed a taming fence, but it took forever to figure out how the dog was getting to the car. And, you know, until you figure that out, you could have two or three runs chasing a dog. I mean, I don't know, $350, virtually $350 is a pretty cheap first fine, first fine, not first occurrence. And it doesn't mean that the district justice can't fine at a higher rate if there are repetitive violations, it just means that his or her hands are tied in terms of being more lenient. Even if the minimum was 100, you're still on $193 for a first, but that's a lot of money.
I actually would agree with you, I would like to see that talked about more. The process on this would be, because it costs money for the borough to open up to these kinds of conversations, we would probably wanna lump them together and have that conversation maybe towards the end of the year, but I'd be in favor of having a conversation about that particular one. Tommy, you're going to do that, councilor.
I mean, we, last year we did it, when we, we just had a review.
We did a review of the entire codified ordinance, and that was just completed at the end of 2020, 2020, and Solicitor Cassidy is the one that finalized that and put it into effect. I just, and if, if I can add here as an ex-co official, there's very seldom that I've gone over to Mark Martin's office and had even him issue the minimum fine. I mean, you know, we've, we've done things for, there's things in the codified ordinance that's a minimum of $500, and we've gone over there, and he's reduced it to $50 in court cost.
So we have the discretion.
So he had that discretion, so.
Serious violation.
Yeah, a serious, and, and these were, these were, well, these were probably maintenance violations, I mean, with, you know, a raft that was three and a half feet tall and stuff like that, you know, six or eight violations on the same property, and he's reduced the main one to 50, to $50 plus court cost.
Well, I, I'm a little confused, because when I, when I spoke to DJ Martin about that, he told me that he is not permitted to go below.
No, I got, I have the, I have the copies of the tickets that we got back from DJ's office to have, that he reduced them.
Is he?
LinkedIn, or yeah, LinkedIn. Uh, there was a few other places they put it out there. We had it advertised one time in the Sentinel, so.
And you said that he had a connection to someone else who's already an employee?
That's why he's going to the sewer plant and not to the hydrogriff.
Uh, can you explain that? I'm sorry.
He's not going to be working with the gentleman that he's familiar with. He's going to work under somebody else.
I see.
It's my understanding we are also continually.
I need three more people. I had, uh, as I said in the email, I had, uh, one volunteer quit. I had one retire. And by the end of next year, I will have two more retirees, potentially three more retirees at the sewer plant. So, um, we are in need of employees, yes. And that's why there's an agenda, uh, a discussion later on.
I think what we can do is, uh, we'll work with council, um, to formalize this process a little better and, um, make it clear as to what steps were taken before, uh, the process and, and what, what steps are taken after afterwards. I know that the, the motion is contingent on satisfaction of all the pre-appointment requirements. And we can, we can educate council as to what those requirements are per, per different, um, position.
This offer hasn't been made. This is, I, I, I wanted counsel's approval before I made an offer to this guy. Um, and I can do those before, I can make the, you know, once I get the, the approval from counsel to make the offer, I can do the background checks. And if it doesn't check out, then we move on to the next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Counsel satisfied. Is there any more discussion on this? Say, then, author?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Author? Women and men, financial administration coordinates. Vice President Anthony.
Review Board, thank you. President Lord, Review Board has their report. Um, discussion, discussion of the treasurer's report. If he has any, uh, conversation around that, except I will say that we have, um, asked for prior month to be on the report along with current month so that we can make a comparison. Um, any other comments from the committee? Thank you. A little update, update on the 2021 Borough Audit Report. I believe we have a draft copy in our packet, um, of the audit for our eyes only, if I understand.
It's, it's a draft, yes. Uh, that has been, uh, that has been uploaded to the website. Uh, it's been accepted and approved at the state level. So it's, it's just a matter of you guys reviewing it, any comments, and then passing it at the next council.
Is there a letter, a cover letter coming on that, or?
There may be a cover one. I think there is one coming from them, yes.
The executive.
Yeah.
Ask the committee to take a look at that. Maybe let's talk again in two weeks.
That's good. I did tell managers associate that we would have, um, a formal review process that we would, we would go through the audit. And, um, and at the end of that review process, council would have the opportunity to accept the audit. I think that would be.
Accept the audit, yes.
Accept the audit. Is it in a different format from what I was used to seeing? I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't like this format.
It was easy to read.
Right, handle them all.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was different from what I've seen previously. Yeah, I, I was also, before we accept the audit, I'm also looking for the, the management, the executive letter and management letter.
Right.
Other than that, I think we will, the committee will get together and figure out a time, um, you know, the appropriate time to, to discuss this, so. Thank you.
Anything else? Discussion changes, a minimum fine of $250 for the dog for violation of the dog ordinance. I think this was brought by councilman.
You're right.
Thanks. Sorry. Councilman D.
Yes, thank you very much. Um, so it came to my attention from a concerned party that the fine of $250, uh, was the minimum fine that was allowed. I believe that the chief of justice in, in brief, uh, previous meeting, indicating that officers issue a warning first for a first, uh, violation, if you will, and then possibly a fine in the second, uh, if they feel the situation warrants it. But when he gets to the district justice office, his minimum of $250, he found guilty, and then there are $0.30 worth of court fees stacked on top of that. And, uh, the thought was that perhaps that might be a little steep, uh, in some circumstances and doesn't give a lot of flexibility to the judiciary to make, uh, a case-by-case decision about how severe a fine might be. So there was a thought to change this to, uh, a lower minimum fine. And if, if council wanted to, to put a cap on it as well. There's a section two dash four oh seven under violations of penalties. So I guess I'm just looking for some conversation to see if anybody feels.
I, I only don't, um, so I understand the responsibility of having a dog in owner and feeding it and paying for all the vet bill and everything. I think $250, like especially with chief saying that you gotta, you get an opportunity to correct it and make, um, you have an opportunity to correct it before you're fined. I feel like that's, you get your warning, you get your opportunity to correct it, and you, you don't do it again, you know, I, I don't know.
No, I think I, I, I agree with, with councilman, um, Lou Cross. Um, I don't know, just was there a particular reason why you thought $250 might be too high?
I think that the thought was that in some cases, for instance, having small children at home, you know, and somebody who has the house, a child opens the, the door, the dog runs out, um, that could happen more than once. Dogs, uh, at times can become very industrious in getting out of enclosures, not because of bad owner necessarily. I mean, I know in my past, we had a dog that literally climbed a chain link fence, but it took forever to figure out how the dog was getting out of the car. And, you know, until you figure that out, you could have two or three runs chasing the dog. I mean, I don't know, $350, virtually $350 is a pretty cheap first fine, first fine, not first occurrence. And it doesn't mean that the district justice can't find at a higher rate if there are repetitive violations. It just means that his or her hands are tied in terms of being more lenient. Even if the minimum was a hundred, you're still on $193 for a first. That's a lot of money.
I actually would agree with you. I'd like to see that talked about more. The process on this would be, because it costs money for the borough to open up to these kinds of conversations, uh, we would probably want to lump them together and have that conversation maybe towards the end of the year. But I'd be in favor of having a conversation about that particular one. Tommy, you're going to do that.
I mean, we, last year we did it when we, we just had a review.
We did a review of the entire codified ordinance, and that was just completed, um, at the end of twenty twenty, twenty twenty? And solicitor Cassidy is the one that finalized that and put it into effect. I just, and if, if I can add here as, as an ex-co official, there's very seldom that I've gone over to Mark Martin's office and had even him issue the minimum fine. I mean, you know, we've, we've done things for, there's things in the codified ordinance that's a minimum of $500, and we've gone over there and he's reduced it to $50 in court cost.
So you have the discretion.
So he had that discretion, so.
Serious violation.
Yeah, it was a serious violation, and, and these were, these, well, these were probably maintenance violations, I mean, with, you know, a grass that was three and a half feet tall and stuff like that, um, you know, six or eight violations on the same property, and he's reduced the, the main one to fifty, to $50 plus court cost.
Well, I, so I'm a little confused because when I, when I spoke to DJ Martin about that, he told me that he is not permitted to go below.
No, I got the, I have the, I have the copies of the tickets that we got back from DJ's office to have, that he reduced them.
Is the ordinance listed as a minimum fine?
Minimum and maximum, yes.
So I think I'd be interested in seeing some of those.
Okay.
I mean, that sounds like a pretty significant issue.
Would it make sense to do a review of, of fines in general?
We have, I mean, we did, I mean, um, we did about two years ago, and then we did it again when we did the codified, when we redid the codified ordinance, um, because.
Now, according, this has to be in the ordinance. We can't pass the fee by resolution if we want to change.
Not for violations.
Not for violations.
Right. For fees, for permits and, and operations, yes, we can do that by resolution. But this has to be in the penalty phase of the, of the ordinance, yeah.
What does it cost to change the ordinance?
It depends. I mean, it, it depends on how deep you want to go into it. Um, we had spent $15,000 to do the entire codified ordinance.
Well, that's why we changed the order from $250 to $50.
Oh, you're gonna have, you've got advertising costs, you've got attorney fees. So, I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at. I mean, that's the same way when we do the zoning ordinance. We want to do the zoning ordinance all at one time and only advertise it once, not the, the little pieces here and there. So.
I like that you have a whole list for a larger group. I also would like to get copies of the violations where, um, Mr. Zersky is stating that district justice Martin went below the, you know, ordinance minimum because I would like to have a conversation about that and, and find out how that happens and why. So that it informs this body, so they know what we want to do.
So my, my question is, what constitutes a violation? So it's only if officers are fault, correct? So if your dog gets out and your neighbor finds it and brings it back to you, that's not a violation. Your dog gets out and is on fine Toby, and you say, holy crap, you have my dog, and you go pick it up, that's not a violation? And, or do you, somebody finds their dog, gives microchip and takes it to a vet, and the vet says it belongs to someone else? I don't believe that's a violation, is it? I mean, it's only if you are fault, correct?
Well, it depends how far, we got a call just today that there was a dog found, and five minutes later, they called back and said, the owner came, he never responded, so that was not a violation.
So that's not a violation either?
So chief, what is a violation?
It'll be when, when we catch the dog, if we do, or someone else catches it.
Or if, if somebody catches the dog and brings it to the station, then it becomes a violation, right?
How dare that, it's like that.
So do you have discretion, chief?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
A lot of discretion.
Yes.
I think it's a big problem.
I just think the last time I took my dog to the vet, it cost over $300, so, I mean, it, it, I mean, I'm having trouble having sympathy for spending $250 when you seem to have multiple avenues to get your dog back and, uh, and it seems like things are reasonable enough. I don't understand why the, the fine minimum or maximum ma- makes any difference that you spend $300 for the vet and just to get dog shots, you know?
So I, I get the impression of understanding that.
This increase in $250 was modified March 16th of 2021. Does anybody have any memory as to why that was done?
I think at that time, we increased all the fine, uh, most of the fines, all the fines.
Yeah, because some of them were miniscule, man, there were, there was no teeth tooth, um, there was no encouragement to get things resolved. This one, I think, was $150. I have to look at the old codified ordinance, see what it was.
Was there a problem with dogs running around, somewhere in the casper?
I don't know. I believe they were marked, really get them all, okay?
Right.
No, no, we, we did get a lot of problems, but not, just like, take the police.
A lot of problems with dogs?
Oh, my cats.
Some are my caters.
Are they running, are they running loose in the parks?
Uh, sometimes. Mostly, I mean, mostly somebody catches them because anywhere in the borough, you're pretty close to a street. So nobody wants to be, you know, get out there, cause it's a crash, or, you know, whatever.
So I think there's a chance I'd find a, find out a little bit more about not finding the minimum, finding below the minimum, and then, uh, discussion it briefly again in the committee.
We'll keep it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, discussion on infrastructure borrowing. Uh, we had a visit by PFM, uh, last time, I believe it was last time. Uh, and, uh, we were asked to check into the half-prime loan through, uh, PA, which Roger, uh, Major Zersky sent out, I think to the entire council, I'm not sure, just to the committee, not everywhere. So, uh, in, uh, thinking through that, the committee would, um, some of the sort of wedge, the, what we're thinking about though is moving the, or the, the op, the op, what am I trying to say? The opportunity here is to do, to initiate through PFM a borrowing of, or, uh, of what would be a $350,000 payment from the PFM, which could be potentially paid, uh, through.
We could fuel.
Yep. Uh, we could do that as an adjunct to plug it in between, uh, for, for things that we need in between a lesser amount. Had a, a quick conversation with, uh, Mr. Zolsky, and, um, there is a need for the, as much as funding as we can get. Do you want to speak to that for a second, what we're talking about?
Certainly. I, I think in, in the past, we've had this conversation in terms of like, you know, the initial, I'll say, blow through the town to essentially try to address the, the Band-Aid items, the things that have the most immediate attention. It certainly could be upwards of that million dollar mark. Um, and then, you know, proceed with, uh, a, a plan of some type that we're currently going through now, preparing the capital plan to address bigger issues and bigger projects that are coming out, so.
And the capital plan, you're thinking is going to be done in total when-ish?
Uh, we're, we're projecting like three months, so we're probably a couple of weeks into it, so it'll be the middle of summer.
Good. So, so by the time the fund, the first round of funding that we could put together would be available, you may even have a full capital plan for us?
So we have already taken what I'll call the red streaks in terms of the robotic study, um, evaluated those and tried to get those, tried to get the worst of the red, if you will, or the packaging of those red streaks into a, a manner that we could do this patching kind of project. So that has already actually been started, um, to be able to facilitate tends to doing something this year with that before we move into something in the future in terms of a bigger project.
And I think that is part of the point is that we want to get something done this year and plan for the following years through your plan, correct?
I would agree, but I'll also sit here in front of you today with all the craziness going on with oil and, and the contracting world. I, I don't believe in my heart that you'd be getting your best value if you did it at the end of this year. I'd say it doesn't need done, but, and I'm, I'm not also saying that, you know, a seat of, uh, flies aren't going to be $385 next year either. I don't know that either, so, uh, but everything's up right now. I mean, and, and, and people are busy, so, um, you know, depending on what you believe that's going to happen with the economy. If people are busy next year, then, you know, it'd be a better time, and in theory, you think that oil could at least come down a little bit, um, after things stabilize and certain conditions will be global, but that's like the crystal ball, so, but.
Right.
I'm not sure.
We also think with all the same vigor, that rates are going to be higher next year than they are right now.
Very true, yes.
So all that being said, for the committee, the idea is initiate PFM because we know we have stuff that needs to get done. Have the money available as soon as it's available, or we have the ability and capability to do the beginning parts of it, and then continue on a plan, continue to research the PA half-prime deal as fast as that rate's going up, to plug in in between with projects that are ready and ready to be done, so that we have access to this. Thoughts? Looking directly at you because you're on the committee.
Yeah, no. I think, I think, I think most of the members of the committee are very interested in that, uh, red, uh, work. I'm not sure how you phrase that.
Yeah, I, I know what you're talking about, yeah.
I, I think one of the, the thoughts that occurs to me is, I, I've heard you say a couple of times, and thank you for your expertise, by the way. It's, it's, God, we're not learning all that. But, um, you found that almost there's this pot of, uh, very hot, uh, repairs that need to be done, but we're just skimming the surface of that. And I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing you incorrectly.
Okay, let, let me explain my intended, uh, approach to those areas. For example, when we went out, we said, okay, hey, there's a 50 foot by 25 foot area that we would go out and fix. That 50 by 20, you know, that's a relatively small area. Or, you know, based on the width of a milling machine, which is either four feet or seven feet, we would go out and do a four foot wide or seven foot wide strip down a road that's 100 feet long. Um, and, and do it for, for what, you know, I mean, in terms of, we'd actually take it all the way down, put new base in, put new top foot on it, and it would be, be look fair, okay, in terms of that. To stabilize, you know, we're going to take the worst of the repair just to stabilize that so it doesn't get, doesn't need to unravel. But you're going to have these things that are going to adjust it, this slot of brandy pavement and, not, some weight pavement on your side. You know, that's the reality of, of where the dollars go. So, um, so the intent more of stabilization, stabilization project than, than to try to, you know, fix whole structures of street or even, you know, really, we wouldn't probably be doing full width street repairs, you know, in, in a, in a given area. We would just try to be, try to drag our money out as far as we can get in terms of, you know, trying to address the worst of the worst.
Okay, so, so you basically would bring a number of projects to that list that could be funded.
Yeah, like, like, I, we work backwards. So when we come up with the list, we kind of prioritize it, and we say, hey, look, it's going to be a million dollars, you know, based on what we think that's going to cost. We can do these first 26 areas, and that, you know, that's the kind of magnitude I'm envisioning. We're going to jump all the way around town, um, in all different areas of town, and do this milling and, and patch paving kind of.
And then you have a bottom to that, to that list, that if we still had money, and said, oh, you completed your, your, your little terror response.
Yeah.
Now we start working on.
I, I do, but I don't think you can afford to borrow that amount of money.
Do you have a guess in the, what that number is?
I, I don't yet, no, right, but we can, that's something we can, as we go through, we can think of.
I mean, you know, this discussion within the committee, I, I believe I'm in agreement with you that we really need to jump on those hot areas and do as many of them as we possibly can, and then have a, a nice plan to follow it. But those hot spots have got, they're, they're going to make a, a significant difference in the community. I mean, I lost a, a less than the other day, just kidding.
So we do have, um, we do have a reduction in the amount that we can borrow every time the rates go up, right? You know, do, do you understand the amount as well as anybody, so that's why I'm trying to make this happen as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think we should move on, on the borrowing immediately and get the money locked in. We're not going to get better rates for six months or eight months, or.
We don't think so.
We don't.
We do, we'll just borrow a moment. Because we needed councilman President Miller. Thoughts?
I, I'm in agreement.
Okay.
I just, I think this also ties in with our next, uh, discussion on governmental services expenditure plan, um, which is how far along are you in the capital improvement plan process?
Just a couple of weeks. I mean, we, we kind of prioritize this first, um, accounting, if you will, of the, of the worst areas. Um, but then, you know, we're going to carry right on, uh, continuing through.
Now, are you doing that process under our contract review with Penone? Or is, or is that cost on top of the typical?
Well, I mean, we have, our, our contracts essentially just now are the rate contracts, so, um, you know, we're just proceeding with comparing that to together documents, so.
Do you have an estimate of how much that will cost? In addition, so we, we've asked you to do a lot more work?
Yes.
So what we budgeted for you for, you know, assuming that it may change, so what, what, do you, do you know what they would?
I have a sense, just from past experience, but I also don't want to, you know, I mean, it could vary by length, but it, it could be upwards of $20,000. I think that's a real moment.
Yeah, because we, I think, you know, we'll get into this discussion next, but.
Okay, so I'm just going to guide this for a second. When I'm here from the committee, just move forward, we get a PFM, they get us information on moving forward. Any other thoughts from the council board, or? Okay, thank you. So discussion on governmental services expenditure plan, I think Major Zersky sent us a copy of the plan in the packet. Again?
Yeah, this was, this one revised a little bit. I, uh, I took in the, into account some of the radio stuff and a few other things. Uh, we removed a few items out of there. I did add in the, um, the potential for the RFP, for the feasibility study to pull, and I just plugged a number in there. That's, uh, uh, the 40 grand seems to be the number that keeps popping up. So this is, this is just a, between, again, uh, Superintendent Dewey, Nate Royal, Chief Myers, Chief Nepp. Uh, this is what we've come up with. Actually, some of these numbers have been on here for quite a while since we first got noticed that, uh, we were going to be receiving these funds, so. Uh, but this, these were tangible projects that we can put this money into that we, because this is a one-time thing. We're not going to get anything after this, so to, to set up a program or anything like that, kind of didn't make sense because, well, we don't have money in the budget to, to sustain something like that, uh, long-term. So these were things that we needed, things that we put off to take care of other items. And like the AV system in this, in this room, you don't open that door back here right now. So we're, we're shoestring together with what's going on in here to make this meeting happen, so.
Are you, are you looking for the council to approve this list as it exists?
I, for, I guess, in a roundabout way, yes. I mean, the $50,000 to the website is probably a little high.
Well, before you, before you.
Like them one at a time.
Can I give you one, or, or some other, because I don't want to take up too much time.
Yep.
On the agenda. The, the emergency services radios, do we have a, you have 175 on there? Do you have a breakdown of how that works?
I had, based on what we were, the numbers we were getting and the borough-owned ones that the fire company has. This wasn't all of the fire company radios, this was the borough-owned radios, um, and what Chief Nepp or Chief Myers needed, uh, based on numbers we had probably about six to eight months ago, that was the number we come up with that we would need to replace.
So 175 is for all of the police and all of the fire radios?
No, the fire radios the borough owns. There's a difference between the total amount of fire radios and the fire radios the borough owns.
Okay. How many fire radios is the borough on?
We have four mobile units, and I think that we're eight, at the last count, there were eight portable.
How much does it cost per unit?
The portable units, the portable units of handhelds are around four grand. The ones that go into the unit, I think were 8,000 the last time.
Ten?
Six.
No, that was last year's cost.
That was last, yeah, well, this is, this is kind of based on last year's cost, yeah.
How many do we need for the police?
She has 10 cars, uh, and 16 officers, plus we had, uh, would you have two spares, I think, chief?
Well, yeah, we would use one as a base station, but we'll be able to do that at all.
That also includes Nate's emergency management, his EMC radio also.
Chief, how many radios do you currently need?
I have all ready for this, and without actually counting, I'm going by what I'm trying to remember. I mean, probably five, four or five mobile radios. And then software to make it work, which I don't have any idea, but that's the problem.
So, did I hear that right? You, you need about four mobile radios and software against what?
Yeah, well, the software against all of them.
All of them.
And we, you don't have to get, what that still costs?
Absolutely, so around around $400 per unit for the reform 175 rated B25, which, uh, just noticed recently that Steve, you know, I talked to one of the officials from the county, and he said, we're having difficulty securing the transmitters, a couple, we need a couple more. So we're still in the legal end, uh, things for equipment, all that kind of stuff, everything in fact, so. Uh, they need the project maybe bumped back into 2024, as far as that. They're hoping to secure the messages, but. So I see we're having a hard time trying to estimate.
Mr. Anthony, if you're doing the math there, does that pencil out?
Um, my little scratch map tells me that it doesn't come to 175, but I would be grateful if we could maybe receive that information in some kind of format that we could.
I think so too. I think if you had a little bit more detail written out as far as what we're buying with the 175, that would go a long way, and if, if that's the correct budgeted amount. amount.
Well, this could, I mean, this, this could all go down to zero if the county decides that they're gonna use their ARP funds and be nice to police and fire department.
Do we know if that's an option, if the county is going to...
Well, that's not gonna change the policy, they, they do something as to that, but I don't, don't know if they have any...
How long will we have to wait until we know that?
Well, everybody, the ones that participated on the survey were like, well, for talking to Commissioner Ekelberger, he was hoping to have the results of that in demand and maybe even possibly, um, a decision that they may make, because of what they're gonna favor through the survey, you know, what part that you're gonna support. If you will, that we, uh, as well, I mean, I, I tapped up, uh, similar costs for the fire department, I don't want to be deceived, that, you know, that was one of the factors that, if you accomplish all the radios in the, in the fire department in Nevada, we currently have twelve mobiles that are in service, a six thousand dollars a piece, that's seventy-two thousand dollars. Also, with the apparatus, and this isn't even, um, in this town, we're not supporting the reserve engine, which we're gonna decommission here eventually this summer, so that would save an additional seven radios, but we're gonna count thirty-seven portable's in the system and four thousand dollars a pop, and that's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, the grand total of two hundred and sixty thousand. As far as our numbers, there again, the competitive nature of hopefully, um, because they're all between the two big hits, between motor radio, we currently have ours radios, motor radio would be a competition, the P twenty-five will give us the opportunity that we could select even more than those two, maybe even a different medium or another type of generic brand. But, um, to say that that standard that we currently have motor over hours, we could get some form of a wood purchase through the county, that's the type of things that we're looking at to drive down that total cost.
Okay.
Um, and just to answer your question, most is, the fire department, Dodge has, the fires, at least did purchase, put a few radios and primarily a lot of portable's. Um, it's really, since when was the last radio project was? The Bay Area, with my understanding, split primarily in motors.
Okay.
And some of the motors even had two units in them, would reduce that, because some of the pumpers, they all had two radio heads in the system and now we don't, we don't even need that anymore. We're doing everything, doing what we can to reduce the number.
Thank you for the detail.
Right.
Um, any other discussion?
No, only that, I think it would be more...
I think we need more qualitative information, we're going to...
We don't understand what's possible and then reallocation later, but we're gonna try and sort of plan together some, good, have actual... And it sounds like, I mean, additional services funding and someone in the audience who's practically both in and of her chair, I think, offers an additional thought on that.
Senior report.
Okay.
But I'll mention...
That's important, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Wait, the edge of our seat.
So, B, if we're gonna continue down the list, would be, uh, a complete survey of the current Borough infrastructure and road waste, this is what you were referencing earlier, yes?
This is, this is what I was referencing earlier and, so there were, I think there were two things that we've already allocated out of this.
Yes.
So, with eighty-five thousand dollars, we have to draw it down by twenty-five, three ninety-eight, and I think that was the GIS, the GIS portion.
Yeah, the GIS portion, yeah, I'd have to look and see exactly what that is, but that's all added in, yeah.
Well, did we, are we paying for the robotics program out of?
We're paying for the robotics, for everything that, that Panoni is doing, and since now that Panoni's gonna also do the capital approval plan and a good bit of data collection for the GIS, this number went up from the original one, and I think I had, I think I had thirty-five thousand in here originally.
I did see that.
And I bumped this up to make sure that we had enough in here to cover this.
Well, in terms of like, it's gonna cost twenty thousand.
Well, that's, that's the problem.
It hasn't went.
Yeah.
If, if the expectation is that we're gonna do the, the actual data collection, that's also...
Is that also the expectation?
We've got any hour terms, Chief, so...
Is there, is there, is there, and does that fall in there then? The arrangement with the board, the per hour rate?
Yeah.
So, it'd be nice to have like an estimate on that if we can...
Yeah, we could put that together.
All right. That kind of sounds nice.
Awesome. C is, um, complete revamp of website, so fifty thousand dollars allocated, but I don't hold that in question.
This is before, this is before the, the approval of council here. Now, and, and with what Zelenkovsky and Axelrod had said, we can go out past twenty twenty-four with this, with the, the determination, and, and we're gonna get ready to power first, before, actually very shortly, uh, with the Treasury Department on our initial four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, we have all the documentation we need, we'll be getting the Zelenkov, with Corey Johnson from Zelenkovsky and filing that report with the Treasury Department. So, we'll have the four hundred thousand dollars put back into the general fund that we can start paying out some of these things. One of them is the upgrade of the AV system in this room.
So, on C, the fifty thousand dollar revamp of the website, and it's only gonna be, is it ten grand?
Ten thousand.
Ten thou, yeah. With, that's the, basically, uh, decided that we could leave room for things that have forms, we don't know what that's gonna cost, so we do need some flexibility in our future budgets. Right, and we did, we didn't address social media, those plugins, those, I'll call them plugins, but...
And I think there's gonna be, one of the things that we're looking for, particularly with, um, and this is something that, that Felicity Cassidy and I discussed, was a social media policy, something that'll cover us for right to know, how we treat certain information we put out on Facebook, on Twitter, whatever other accounts we have. So, there's gonna be some attorney fees in there, there's gonna be a few other, um, costs, that we're gonna be involved with that.
Probably draw that down, I...
We could, yes.
Probably draw that down to twenty would be generous.
When, when, when was this, when was this report created?
Some of them were created probably a year and a half ago when we got notice that we were getting these funds.
So, it sounds like it needs an update.
I think so.
I mean, every, every item so far has been grossly overblown. So, it sounds like it needs to be updated and, and have a, or create a number of details so we can see how the numbers are, arrived at. I, I think, uh, Mr. Chairman, that it might be a better use of time to send this back, have it redone and presented to us the next meeting.
I agree, I think, I think the remaining items, the only two concerns I have is that, I think we have to revisit what we're going to do with the, the allocated money for the N S four already, because that's starting to change.
Yeah. Well, this is just stuff that, this is stuff that was put into here from, I mean, from, from different groups that put into it, I mean, Nate, uh, EMC World, you know, whatever those, and we've added stuff to this, and this was originally a idea of what we wanted to look at, uh, going down the road. So, this was never, there was, there was constant experiment in here, but there was never any hard fast numbers added to this stuff.
The other thing is, I think we should include, you know, if we're going to do a more detailed accounting, we need to include, um, how much we're paying, we need a CPA. Um, I think the last check that I signed then was two of four, was the second of what we're paying them, and it seems like we've paid an eleven thousand dollars so far.
Yeah, our contract was twenty thousand.
And that contract was, it was one point eight percent of funds received or not to exceed twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
So, I'd be interested to know, are we going, are we paying the one point eight or are we gonna pay the not to exceed twenty-two? Um, that was, uh...
Because that would be a difference of six thousand bucks?
Six thousand. Um, those are my two concerns and then also, um, that's all.
So, Major Sazursky, is there an opportunity for us to have this updated?
Yeah, we can update it. Uh, some of these numbers, like the AV system in the Brooklyn, this, this office, I cannot, we're having trouble getting definite numbers on equipment. Uh, the numbers are bouncing up and down, they're going back and forth. Uh, third element, I've asked them three or four times and they're, they're people, their suppliers are not giving them hard and fast numbers. I, I ran into the same thing with low B, um, on certain things, they're...
Would it be, I mean, would it help you if, if there was some sort of, if we just put together some sort of package RFP and went out and said, we're looking for this service, we need, we need this, you know, put it all together in a package and, and have somebody bid on it?
We can do that, that's what I'm, you know, that's kind of what, what, what do we want this system to do? I mean, that's the, that's the thing. I mean, what, what Third Element offered was what they set in, down in Lower Allen Township, what they set up in Silver Spring Township, so if anybody's familiar with that system, they're very confident they can do the same thing here and get rid of these and get, um, you know, high definition plug mics, um, so that we're not looking at each other through the, the forest of little black Q-tips.
Yeah, I think that's an, an important discussion for another night to have the committee, the municipal outreach committee weigh in on what they want to see as part of that package. I know that's part of the goal, for the two to do that, so, I, I would want, what the committee wants to be included in that, so when you go out, that we're getting everything...
I mean, this is, this, with, with, at the advice of our consultant on this, we are within our rights to take the, you know, once we file the, the paperwork and we do the reporting, um, as they suggested, we're, we're good with this money. There, there, we're not under the twenty twenty-four deadline anymore. So, we can, we can let this ride, this doesn't have to be right now. So, we can, we can kind of let this go a little bit. If you wanna, I mean, if you want to take a step back and look at this, this was, I mean, to be honest with you, these were my first initial thoughts of this whenever the money started coming through.
Right.
This is stuff that we've talked about over the years, getting done, and we just never...
Well, I think, I think we're all, I think we're trying to get on the same page in that if you're, if you're looking for an approval, I think council's looking for a little more detail, that's what I'm hearing, and we have to come together and, and get a, a solid plan together to move forward.
Okay, there's not a rush for next meeting though?
Not a rush for next meeting, but I think, you know, in terms of moving also to their goal, like the, the AV upgrades, I think that we should probably have that discussion for the next meeting. But not next, not April, but maybe committee meeting.
Okay. Would that, would that fall under municipal and community outreach?
Yes.
So, I mean, maybe it's possible for that committee to have some conversation with Third Element and/or Spider and/or, and the other vendor that can, in my experience in dealing with them, very quickly come up with a proposal and very quickly identify costs that exist today with a caveat that costs are subject to change.
See, me, I'd like to know what the BCPs are, the weekly...
Absolutely, yeah, agreed.
If we could actually put together the Third Elements, something they'd like to do for us, we should be able to just share that out. Do you have a copy of that?
I don't have a copy of it, no. I'll have to get one, I'll see if I can get one, probably.
Yeah, that was the sort of discussion.
So, we can modify that package to the way we want.
Yeah.
And then you guys would be involved in the website number also, in terms of...
Yeah.
All right, sorry to beat my committee to death, but, um, I wanted to make sure we got over that stuff. Is there anything else that anybody will start on on the committee?
I, I do have something, I think, and is that a good time?
Yes.
Okay. There are two good things, these are fun things, I'm ready to take a deep breath and enjoy this. Um, I don't know, I am such an incredible sports crazy person, right? Not, but I happen to know that the Mechanicsburg High School Girls Basketball Team has done an amazing, amazing thing recently. They had a great season, twenty-one to six record, they made it to the Giant Center to, in the last mid-ten conference team standing, uh, in the TIA tournament, uh, reaching the final four, which is really amazing. So, I would like to find out exactly how we go about, uh, coming up with a resolution honoring their, their fantastic season, it's been a great time. So, how do we do that? A little guidance? Just a, a guide, thank you.
We'll prepare a resolution for you next week.
And I can provide some detail if you'd like to have it, I'd be very happy to do that. And then the second one, uh, is one that, um, I really don't, I hope it's not overlooked, but, uh, Dale Westby has, has been, uh, the force behind Red Shop for eighteen years and he is admittedly a very independent fellow, but he has done it, uh, not truly publicly, but certainly the majority of the work is fallen at his shoulders over these years. And he just stepped down. So, he has stepped down and is being replaced by Rick Murray of South Mountain Entertainment, who's the president of that particular organization. Dale's staying on as vice president, um, Yvonne Murray is gonna stay on, or she's going to come on as the treasurer, uh, who's a CP by training, and then, I don't know, Josie, if you know Josie Fanazzo, uh, is, is on as well, you know, is continuing, uh, as a director. But anyway, but Dale's stepping back and he recognizes that his lifespan is limited and he doesn't want the event to be dismantled upon his death, so he has handed off the reins. So, it'd be nice to prepare a resolution thanking him and acknowledging him for all of his years of really fantastic work on that project. Would it be possible to prepare a resolution for him as well?
Sure.
Yep, for years of service to the Borough and the Kent Park Red Shop.
And a real man. Well, it's a little longer.
He was out, but he was the one that organized and put everything together and, how about the ceremony?
And I'll tell you something, the thing about all this is impressive, I don't know that it should make the, the resolution, but he, he basically has this event, uh, down to about a total budget of twenty-one hundred dollars, if you can believe that, per year. And, uh, and currently, he has amassed, uh, he has amassed a nice reserve of just under ten thousand dollars. So, he's really leading the organization in a very, very good place. So, thank you.
Moving on, okay.
Moving on.
Moving on. So, I'm working with Shafiqi, Councilman Rooker.
Hold up. Um, so, we have some guests here this evening, so I'll turn over the floor to Superintendent Huey slash Engineer Mendinsky.
I have them to come tonight to introduce themselves, because this is the way we'll be proceeding in the future, at least for now, then, if you'll notice, I'm really the public works and Shafiqi are on the agenda, so, um, we can tackle these items before the rest of the day, and if you need to leave, you're welcome, we're welcome to do so. But, you know, I'll just open, we can open the floor up to have you, you know, introduce yourselves or roles and tell us what, you know, important things are happening right now at the, to a degree.
Well, I'll go first, since I'm sitting here. Um, I recognize a few faces here tonight and to most of you, I may be a new face. So, introduce myself, Justin Mendinsky, I'm with HRG, um, my official title at HRG is I'm the group manager of our water waste water services. Um, I have actually been serving the Borough and Black City for that little bit of time, uh, since two thousand fifteen, I believe. I have worked with Superintendent Huey and his predecessor, Mr. Adams, for those of you who, who know him. Um, we have a number of projects, uh, in, in active state right now, the biggest of which is a screening project at your wastewater treatment plant, uh, something that greatly improved the staff's, I guess, operation, you know, they spend a lot of time right now maintaining the inflow pumps and, um, it's quite honestly become a bit problematic, so we're working on some equipment that will ultimately, uh, assist that effort and, um, make their life a little bit easier. It's in permanent stage, I expect to have for you, potentially at your main meeting, um, two things permanent in hand, so we can go forward with that, and a proposal through Coast Service Reinstallation. And I'm glad to expand on that. Uh, before I do that, I certainly want to see my time with Superintendent Huey to go ahead and introduce himself. I'd be glad to discuss all the great things that we've been doing for both the Borough and Authority over the last couple of years.
I am Superintendent Huey, I've worked for the Borough since twenty fifteen, I have been the plant superintendent since twenty seventeen. Uh, I am in charge of the wastewater treatment plant, the collection system, which is approximately twenty-five miles of pipe and growing, and eight pump stations, and the laboratory... and eight pump stations, and the laboratory that we do our analytical testing and we report to the state.
Thank you for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you for having me.
Um, are there any, um, projects in particular that you'd like to highlight and interview, or is it that you, um?
Yes, I'd be glad to, um, so the things that we're currently active on, um, we do assist Superintendent Huey and the staff with respect to, I mean, the extraction system repairs that are needed. Um, the focus of the Borough has been since 2014, 2015, to address, uh, INI, you might hear that term, infiltration and info, uh, basically, it's the fancy way of saying all the rainwater and groundwater, continue your piping systems when rain, snow, snow melts, et cetera. Uh, so, as projects come up, we assist the staff with reviewing, um, repair recommendations, uh, looking at things like hydraulic calculations and pipes may need to be dug up and potentially increase in size. Um, for the legacy park project, which I'm sure, uh, Mr. Galski has discussed many, many times over the years here, uh, we do provide construction inspection when there are name lines that are being installed out there, as well as when the pump station was, um, being constructed. Current activity, we just recently reviewed a retrap, uh, so they're right now soliciting a restaurant to come into one of their, uh, facilities out there. And just last week, working with Superintendent Huey, you know, reviewing some things like, we're trying to retrap, uh, to protect the Borough Sanitary Sewer System. Um, basically, we're really with that screening project right now, um, that we talked about, so last fall, we were asked to help with evaluating the difference between putting in fine screen, putting in a grinder, two different pieces of equipment, I won't bore you, or I can go into lots of detail, I'd love it either way. Um, but ultimately, we did make a recommendation to install fine screen, uh, we worked with the manufacturer, who does a lot of the installation in the local area and also can provide the installation through Co-Stars. Uh, they've come out to your facility a few times, as recently, I believe, was last week. Uh, they were out with our staff, as well as the previous plant staff, and purpose there is to finalize that installation proposal to you, uh, which again will be available through the Co-Stars program. Uh, PADD is right now reviewing the water quality management permit applications, that's the application to construct that fine screen. Uh, they asked us for a little bit of clarification and some, uh, tweaks if you go to the application, we made that back to them a few weeks ago. So, as soon as the permit is issued and ultimately you have, um, open the front gate for the Co-Stars installation at your discretion and approval, that process can move forward. I believe that was budgeted for this year, um, as part of the, the one, um, user rates if you go up in the sewer system. I think those are probably the, the high points that we're currently working on. Um, and I do work with Greg when things come up with respect to the capital improvements planning that he's mentioning. Uh, just sharing information back and forth would be helpful for any sanitary sewer improvements where there might be other redway improvements, formal aruprums, et cetera. So, we're all just collaborating to the best of our ability to make sure that you have a holistic approach to, of that, things like your, uh, infrastructure improvements.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, do any, uh, committee members have any questions?
I have a question. So, I'm embarrassed to admit this, this has been really to me, but I'm learning, can you just help me understand, uh, the difference between the collection process for stormwater versus sanitary sewer? Is it same pipes, different pipes, same pumps, different pumps?
Here in the Borough, they are completely separate, luckily, um, in certain cities in the TA, Harrisburg would be one of them, there are some areas where the pipes actually do carry both the sanitary sewer and stormwater, and I heard things like combined sewer overflows, that's where both stormwater and sanitary sewers entering similar pipe, and when the volume gets too great, which is really because of the rainwater, then you have the discharge of the blend, which is pretty well diluted, but it is still raw sewage going into, uh, the river. Luckily, we can't, the borough does not have that situation, your stormwater and your sanitary sewer collection system are completely separate, to the best of our knowledge. Um, and ultimately, everything that is in the sanitary sewer system goes to the wastewater treatment plant out in town and is treated there and, uh, treated afterward, is discharged ultimately to, uh, the kind of the creek. Um, Greg can talk more, certainly with respect to the stormwater collection system, but they are, uh, long-winded, definitely separate, and, um, because it costs a lot of money to try and separate them when they are in these communities in the same pipe.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Uh, so, uh, that foundation to our Public Works Department reports, uh, so, um, and Junior Galski, I'll just let you kind of give us an update on the, um, capital improvement, contract and infrastructure plan that you're working on.
Uh, kind of mentioned previously, and kind of, you know, kind of where we're at, as we, uh, start to go down the road, our, our first, uh, step, we're prioritizing that plan at the saving. Um, we've taken a look at that, kind of the worst of the worst at this point, um, where we're gonna progress through to create a document that kind of outlines, you know, what that, that method to the madness should be, and also a long-term maintenance solution. So, we're not just talking about repaving roads, but the roads also that could, could be crack sealed or, you know, oil and chip, and that's a, that's what I forgot when I say that. Um, you know, but throw out some different options, low-cost options, to try and maintain or extend the life of our roads. Um, hopefully, which council will have, that have the benefit, you know, oil chip costs a tenth of what it costs to pave, and it carries its own stigma with it, so I, I understand those things. We tried some micro-surfacing a couple of years ago, you know, I do think there's some application in the Borough for that. Um, just different options in terms of what, what, how we approach, um, that, that roadway reconstruction work. And then obviously, in terms of, of related, but, but underneath those roads, we have the stormwater system, which we of course work with the Authority as well to determine whether repairs need to be made, um, you know, we've somewhat constantly been in reaction mode, frankly, for the last, you know, five to 10 years. Um, you know, stuff breaks, and it's kind of happened here recently, um, with, um, I'll call it the East Street Culvert and over at Myers Alley, um, where we have two railroad crossings, which are old legacy, probably, I have no idea how they are, civil war era crossings, um, that are, are failing. So, we're gonna have to spend some significant dollars to, to improve those, and certainly, no, the public doesn't let us have the trains down to do that, so, uh, that can get tricky. Um, but, um, in terms of the capital prep, once we get through the, um, kind of the paving portion, you know, we're, we're, we'll be coordinating with, with the, uh, Sewer Department to identify of, of those repairs and see what, how that may shuffle the list if it does at all, and then also, uh, proceed with, you know, adding in some other things, um, around the Borough in terms of, you know, its park improvements and other things outside of what we call a typical infrastructure, um, to give the bigger picture of where the, where the dollars are. So, that's our plan.
Thanks for the update. Um, so, that move on to our discussion on the street sweeping options, so I think your package, you received, um, this update of the, uh, of kind of some of our options in regard to street sweeping, uh, so I'll kind of see if there's some discussion.
We've received four calls asking why we're not street sweeping, if that wants to start this, this, the discussion.
Did they all come from one person?
No. No. The, 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 they're talking about Myers Alley, that all came from one person, but.
I know a lot of the previous options we've discussed, where, where we would rent the equipment and then we would have our own personnel to drive it.
That's what, this was in here, um, Chairman Miller asked, or President Miller asked me to put what we've received in the past in here, um, you know, just to provide this for information for discussion points. We can put fine points on these later if we want to. I added the electric option, uh, because both of the rigs that we've looked at before, uh, the Wavo is the one that we used for leaf cleanup two years ago. Uh, those sweepers, they're, they're not bad sweep, uh, sweepers, not really intended for leaves, but they, they work, they did what they were supposed to do for what we were doing with them. Uh, but they have an electric option now, um, so that information I provided, they are around $100,000 more than what the diesel power goods are. But the diesel prices where they're at are what we're saving in the long run, so there's, uh, and they're quiet, you could run those at four o'clock in the morning and not wake anybody up.
Councilor Rooker, I would be interested, uh, if we're gonna go out and update the numbers, I'd love to incorporate outsourcing into the mix. Thinking through how many tons we actually do want to sweep and then getting prices on, on outsourcing. I know I'm not on the committee, but I'd love to speak to that.
No, I, I definitely think that's a valid point, um, in my opinion, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need an own equipment if we're not gonna use it to the extent that we're gonna, we're getting our money to work out of it, so the idea of not having to maintain it, the idea of not having to, um, man it, I feel like are, um, something that is interesting to me, so, um, if having some sort of, um, company or, look, I mean, looking into that option would be great.
Do we have money budgeted year to year for street sweeping that we're not using? And if so, could we use that money to contract out for?
This is the first year we've put money in the budget for the purchase or the lease of a street sweeper. And it's sitting there, it's, we just never moved on the last offer from Wurtex.
Well, are there any other expenses related to it?
Uh, theirs was a lease option, so the, a lot of that stuff is already included in that, in that price as far as maintenance and stuff. The only thing we would have is the fuel and the person to drive it, so.
Sure, like you said, as I remember after Jubilee Day, the cleanup is amazing after the bad event. But without a street sweeper, without a street sweeper out there with brooms and posts, yeah. So, I don't know if there's a, any, um, way to get some street sweeping done until we come to the final decision, I don't know if there's budgets.
At this point in time, that would be very difficult, because everyone has their schedule set already, but we can, I mean, we can put it out for bids, uh, the Authority went out in June, um, and it was September when we got started with the sweeping, but that, that's kind of at the end of our posted signings, I mean. And that's where the other one is, comes in, is what, what is it that you want to sweep and how often you want to do it? I mean, if we want to meet the signage that's out there, um, we can do that, um, and put that in, how we write the contract up, to put it out there. Um, it's, it's gonna be expensive.
So, are you sure we don't have a good plan for it?
We do have a good plan.
Oh.
We, is that how, if that's what the committee has to tell me, is that what they want done? Or do we want to change that? I mean, that's, and then whenever you have a, like, we would use a street sweeper when somebody would, like, streets and treats and stuff like that to clean up the next day, you know, all just the, the stuff that gets put on the ground, um, that's a special charge whenever you lease that out. So, uh, doesn't offset it, not really, but, you know, it's, it's, we have it here, we need it, um, if we have to have the contractor come in and do it, it's, there's gonna be extra charges on it. Um, and we ran into this issue with him, the contractor sets their, in the, in the Authority's case, the contractor kind of sets on times when he was coming in. Um, and to have a police officer follow and enforce, you know, we're gonna have to have somebody that's available to go and, and write tickets for cars that are parked where they're not supposed to be, so, uh, so, now, trying to get out creates, creates an issue.
I, I recognize there are a lot of, yeah, moving parts to it, and thank you for bringing this to light. I think sometimes, it sounds to me occasionally, like, we talk about the reasons why something can't be done more than we talk about the reasons or, or how something can be done. So, we have money to decide, yes or no?
Yes, I suppose.
We have, we have vendors out there who do street sweeping for municipalities like ours, yes or no?
No.
There are no, there are.
Nobody likes to do a borough. It's, the borough's too tight, the cars are parked on the streets. Um, the closest one that, the, the one that we, that I spoke to, the closest to the Borough mechanic for, uh, a stoner out of Carlisle, he is, he's the one that bought Arnold's Street Sweeper, he said he would not sweep the Borough for less than $175,000 a year.
When, when was the last time that you looked for vendors to do this for?
Two years ago with the Authority.
So, it's two years ago, and how many vendors did you interview?
We did, there was three that fit.
So, we only talked to three entities?
There was only three that would be.
There was an RFP process.
Yes, I understand, but I, I mean, I have some questions about the RFPs that were put out too, but that's for, the topic for a different.
Well, and, and the caveat with the, the process the Authority went through, it was for a specific MS4 purpose. So, there was some equipment challenges with that, that MS4 required certain equipment, which we are not allowed to do in this case. So, that, that's a decision I'm requiring.
Right, it seems to me that we, it seems hard to believe that there are not municipalities or, or vendors, private party vendors that would not be interested in, in looking at street, sweeping the streets here. So, I, I think it's a, I think it's a value, um, and I think it's something that should be researched. I'm not sure what the right way to do that is. Do other committee members have any thought on that? I can bless the starting tier then.
But not really, sorry.
Yeah, if I may add something, when you get a contractor and bring him in here to the Borough, they have no idea where they're going. They have no idea, they have to follow the map, they have no idea how to get from point A to point B. So, they end up, I don't know if they end up in the right place, and, anyway, but, um, I don't believe they're willing to, at least, this last one wasn't willing to meet the, um, sweeping signs scheduled that we have out there. And I would say if whoever we're looking at now does not want to meet that, that's a little something sound, because that's what people are asking. And if they first came, no sweeper. Everybody knows, time to move your car, well, first of all, most of them do. So, I would recommend taking those signs out of there if we're gonna get a contractor that isn't gonna follow the signage.
Or, or if our, our employees don't follow the signage, because.
Right, well, when we ran this, when the Borough ran the sweep before, they were out there and we were like right behind them, so, and that seemed to work, that seemed to work pretty well, but, um, I mean, I understand things change, but if you're looking at the most efficient way, in my opinion, is having somebody as numerous to borrow, drive a vehicle and take care of that.
Right, and then you're looking at how often, and then our manpower shortage we have right now.
There are, yeah, there's, there's drawbacks on both sides, and I think that's where I'd, if, 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 maybe, tell me what you want to do. Do you want to go with the signings that's out there, do you want to come up with a dub, a different one, and we can re-sign it? Um, you know, what, what frequency you're looking at, I can draw up the RFP and we can set, we can issue it and we can find out what kind of bids we can get, um, and do it from there. I mean, that's, there's no, there's nothing, nothing sense found that says you have to accept the bid you get. You can reject all of them.
I just, uh, I, I saw this in my email the other day, it completely, it completely surprised me. I don't think, I think this, uh, I think this person came to the bid meeting for the Authority Evercore?
Yes, yeah, they're out of Columbia.
They sent me this, a random email the other day, it said, just wish you had the sentiment information or services and wanted us to do our street sweeping.
They were just, that was, the Columbia office was just starting up two years ago, whenever they did that, the young lady that was with that, that firm, um, she came to the bid meeting and she actually asked and drove around town to get familiar with where they were gonna go, um, and they came back in later and asked a few more questions about, uh, different streets and different problems that she saw. But, um, yeah, they, they do street sweeping, they're actually based, their, their main office is out, uh, on the other side of Redding, but they were working the Columbia office, so.
For people that don't know, how often are we, according to our current signage, sweeping the streets, or are two sweeping the streets?
You're supposed to sweep the streets.
Monday, Friday, Thursday, twice on Mondays and Fridays.
Yeah, and that's Main, Main?
It's Main.
What else have I looked at?
Main Street and Market Street, Monday and Friday, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I said, stayed that, I almost, Monday and Friday, Friday, I think it's Locust and Arch at it in, and then Thursday Simpson.
The sweeping schedule was out on the webpage, I don't know if it's still out there or not.
So, we're sweeping every day in the summer?
Sure, maybe Tuesdays?
Usually it was four to six, maybe four hours in the morning, they didn't sweep all day.
And it was just the streets, it wasn't the entire Borough?
Correct, it wasn't the entire Borough, and that's, and that, that should bring the cost down a little bit, but I think they're thorough, and once we get coordinated with, you know, there's the opportunity, we had, we had problems with when we were running it too. You know, if the driver was sick that day, somebody else was in it, and, and I'll be honest with you, the driver that ran the other one is one of, is the guy that retired last Friday.
Well, that, that highlights the labor issues, and, and I think the chief had made some great points, but if I were a reputable contractor, I'd want someone coming to the same location repeatedly and doing what the young lady did, from the company that came in the first place and drive the streets and, and learn, learn the route, I mean, we, the, the contractor. I mean, we, the contractor, if that's what was chosen, could suggest a frequency also that they could maintain, and could suggest around the signage should be changed. When was the last time we had, I guess, a street sweeper, that wasn't done from the authority?
Last time it ran?
Yeah, like, before we sold it or whatever.
Jubilee Day of two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
About eighteen, sorry.
So, okay, so we're talking four years in.
Yeah.
A, a street sweeper has been run, okay? So I guess my question is, like, obviously, there's cosmetic features of street sweeping, but like, uh, what are the benefits beyond the cosmetic of street sweeping? And I'm about like, just a really dumb question, but I thought nobody's asked it, so...
Beyond that, you have less clogs in the sanitary and storm sewer system. Uh, you have less, you, you're, you can actually get a better first flush when the first storm comes down to go through the system, and it cleans out, and it's not taking all that debris down into the storm system. So you're getting a, you know, your pipes are cleaner, they can carry more water, they can get the water off the street faster. Um, if there's enough inlets on that street, but, you know, there, that's, that's probably the big, number one issue there. Now, does it help with the M S four? Uh, there's a, there's a, there's logic to that, because your outlets are not showing up as much pollutants coming out of them, you know? So, I mean, there's, there's, there's benefits to it, there's definite benefits to it, beyond the estate.
How many, how many tons of material, like a hundred and...
Took a hundred and fifty or eighty? Hundred and eighty, I think it was a hundred and eighty tons total was what we took out.
Eighty tons of material came off the roads with the last program.
Well, and as a ma, as a main street property owner, our, our property changes cleaner where the streets are swept. And we spend a lot of time cleaning the front of our buildings, because it just gets filthy. You can only blow and sweep it, it don't so much. Not a good dish. So...
So I think we need to determine which frequency we want, and, um...
And that's sort of a route, or what's baseball community clean?
Do we do the entire borough, or do we do, you know, how often do we do, do we do the entire borough? How often do we do just Main Street and the sign?
We can, yeah, we can dig up, I'll dig up the stuff from what we had before previously, uh, and send it to the committee. Um, and then you guys can, can discuss, you can tell me what it is, set the specifics. I'll draw up a, an R P, you guys prove it, and we can put it out. We can, I mean, if it doesn't cost anything, we can put it out on, on Penn Bid. And Penn Bid hits everybody off, when we get down to the pool, I have, you know, you, I can pull up who it was that bid on that project, um, New York, Vermont, and then we're all over the place.
So I would say to me, it would, it makes sense to look at things forward slightly and have a set of options and weigh the present, not just the cost. Because, I mean, we couldn't have, what, what I don't want to get into is a situation where we buy or lease a piece of equipment for, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year, or, you know, or buy a piece of equipment for almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, and then, you know, for a period of six months out of the year, it's shit. I think that's not...
I'm trying to get us the electric ones as a demo, all right? And they, they won't, they won't go with it for it.
You know, and then, you know, manpower problems and not being able to run the machines at a frequency that makes sense for the cost. So it's, it's a complicated...
Well, I think we, we gathered, uh, the direction that you're suggesting, I think, is very reasonable, and I think it seems like we have kind of a path moving forward. Uh, kind of get that information from our previous sweeps, and then kind of see, um, if that's just going to be offered in services.
Yeah, all right, we can do that.
And if we're not going to sweep, we'll take the sign now.
Yeah, if we're not going to sweep, let's take the sign.
I think it's important too to just make sure that when you, we don't mind the committee, but anyways, um, uh, have like, the nursing room P R M visits, like, as needed, sweeping, like, after Jubilee Day or Market Street sweep here.
Oh, that would definitely be added and dealt.
Right, so that would, you know, that'd be extra cost.
That would make you, when we, I would think you should call a vendor now and try to get them to come in and...
I can probably call Jason Vortek, and he could probably get me one over here. The problem is, I'm the only one checked out to drive the Vortek machine right now.
Well...
Nobody else.
There's got to be a committee that you could call, come in.
He may, he may have somebody come over and do that. But if we're going to get, if we're going to rent the machine for Jubilee Day, which is like I said, a discussion down, it's on the list. Um, believe me, it's, I'd sooner drive the street sweeper than throw recycling all night, so...
We'd sooner you stay home and get a good night's sleep, so you can come in and... It doesn't involve us with all these other wonderful projects.
That doesn't work, that's...
We could hire somebody with considerably less of a salary than the street sweeper.
We can have a stretch of personnel at any time. And your ideas for how we want to hire people? We could use them, but how are people fulfilled, so...
All right, I think that's...
Let's, let's do that.
I think, I think we have a path, so, um, thank you for your guide already that I've been put. Thank you, Roger, for the suggestion, and, um, I can move it forward, so...